Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this eighth day of August 2022. At this time, I'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening. And anytime that we have a delegate or senator in the House, I think they deserve a special announcement. So we are very pleased tonight to have with us Delegate Heather Tully, who represents us. So she's actually an agenda item, and we'll get to her shortly. So welcome to all of our guests, and we're glad to have you with us this evening. Okay, the first item on tonight's agenda would be the consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on July 25th of 2022.
Let me to approve it and waive the rating.
Second. Okay. We have a first and a second. Council, I kind of jumped it. Actually, the first thing that was on the agenda was the public hearing. So was your first for the public hearing, Wayne?
Yeah.
Here's what's... Better not mess this agenda up, because everything's pretty written over here. So this is to approve the minutes of the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. The next item on the agenda would be the consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on July 25th of 2022.
Let me to approve it and waive the rating. Second.
We have a first and a second. Council, are there any amendments or changes to those minutes as they were presented in your packet? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Next item is public comment. Did anybody sign up to speak? Nope. Back to the back of the room. Amy says no, so we'll move right along. The next item on the agenda would be a brownfields project presentation. It's being done tonight by Region Four Planning and Development, of which we are a member. And we got a little change up on the printed agenda. And tonight, we are happy to have with us the executive director from Region Four, John Tuggel, and Amanda Smar. So John and Amanda, welcome. The floor is yours.
All right. Well, good evening. It's good to be here. We'll go ahead and, if you want, go ahead and share the presentation. So what we put together is a brief presentation of what brownfields is. So to preface that, what we'll go into, so Region Four as a whole, the entire region, all five counties of Region Four have received a brownfield assessment grant, which has spawned this project. Basically, and what that's going to do is it's going to allow us to look at any areas within any of the five counties that you feel may be a brownfield and may have some benefit for economic use. So we'll go through what the presentation is, but at any point, feel free to ask me questions at any time, if anything comes up. All right. You can just scroll right along, just like you're going down a page there, and that'll go right through there. So we just discussed that. So our five counties, just so everyone's aware, is Fayette, Greenbrier, Nicholas, Pocahontas, and Webster. So we do have those five counties as well. A brownfield location, typically when people think of a brownfield location, their first thought is an old gas station, because they have buried tanks and all kinds of nasty environmental things that go along with them. That is a brownfield location, but there are also other brownfield locations. Old, when you look at car dealerships, or when you look at mechanic shops, things like that, anything that could have potentially, even laundromats, could have potentially produced some type of environmental exposure that's negative, could be considered a brownfield location. Anything that's going to be considered hazardous or hazardous or pollutant is also considered that. So make sure when you think about it, you think about it in a wide variety of different things. It's not just pigeonholed into these old, crummy, wicked places. It could be just an abandoned area that used to have a really nice structure on it. And the size of a brownfield doesn't have a particular size. It can be any size. And we'll go through exactly what we can look at. This is an assessment grant, and we'll go through what exactly a cleanup grant could be later on while we look at these things. So the funding is available, and what we received is the first part of the funding, which is the assessment grant. So say you had a property here that you said, hey, this used to be an old laundromat. We think it's right on Main Street. We think it'll be excellent for economic development, but we can't do anything with it, because we have no idea what environmental hazards are here. We would go in, our consultant is Potestor, they would go in, they would do a Phase One environmental survey, just to get an idea of what environmental hazards may be there. Once they determine what's there, then we can determine if we need to go for a cleanup grant to actually mitigate that property, so you can then move forward with putting building a new structure or creating whatever you wanted to do for economic development in that area. So there are two, we're in the assessment phase right now, to look at any properties that you feel may be of interest. And the second phase of that would be to look at cleanup grant, to be able to actually mitigate that property and help you move forward with something like that.
The key there is the property owner has to be willing to do this. It could be any owner, and it could be the city if you have property. But they have to be willing to go into this. A lot of times, they're skeptical, because they're afraid you will find something on our property and they can't get rid of it. But on the flip side of that, when you identify it, you know, it's terrible, because most of the time, a lending agency is going to want that type of analysis anyway. So this gets it for free to have it on record, if there's people out there. If you know of a site, and you know the owner, or maybe, you know, it's one of those situations where the owner is 15 and airs, and you can't hardly, you know, touch it, you still can, if you can get, you know, the permission, you can go in and do that, that type of thing. The hurdle there is the owner has to be willing to do it. We have $300,000 to work with in the whole region, so we feel like we can hit a lot of sites.
So, well, I'll wait until you're done, and then I do have a couple of questions.
All right. So the grant process, which is what we're in now, so the Region Four has been awarded the assessment grant. So we have hired Potestor. We went through a selection committee, and they selected Potestor. They're the consultant. What we're in the process of doing now is gathering inventory of areas throughout the region that each individual county is interested in. The counties, the towns, municipalities, anywhere that anyone in the region feels would be of interest for economic development, we're gathering that inventory. We do have a selection committee to help prioritize those, so that we can determine which ones we go to at what time. But at the moment, I think we've got about 13 sites, so we're not overwhelmed with them at the moment. And we know they're out there. We know there's plenty of brownfield locations within the region, so that would be why we're here, to try and get an idea of any sites that you may be aware of and things like that. But there is a prioritization schedule of how to look through it. If it became an issue to where the $300,000 wasn't going to cover everything, I don't know that that will occur, though. The public meetings are what we're doing at the moment. That's, we're reaching out to everybody to try to get an idea of what inventory is around. You can keep going. So on one, there's a few positives to getting this inventory. One, we can create any map that you need to see, to be able to say, okay, we used to have these dilapidated or blighted areas that were brownfields, and now they're mitigated, and here's what it is. You can kind of show, if you wanted to look at it in a comparison view. We can also look at it as if additional assessments need to be made. So say you need to have a Phase Two or things like that, we will know that. And in some cases, we could actually get the Phase Two completed within this grant as well. So we do have some Phase Twos built into this grant also.
Go back to that one, if you don't mind, the previous one, it's got that chart, that flood chart. You can go through that, go slowly, and tell them how you get from one end to the other of that.
Okay. So we've talked about where we have to identify each of the areas, and that's why we're here, to identify those areas, to figure out where the sites are located. Then it would move into the Phase One assessment. Phase One is typically first, unless a Phase One has already been completed. Sometimes a Phase One's already been done. If it hasn't, the next step would be a Phase One assessment, to figure out what is, what could potentially be there. If we needed to do a Phase Two, if they determined, there's definitely some buried tanks here, then that would warrant a Phase Two, to figure out what is actually causing any hazardous materials. Once you figure out what's there, then we can look at doing a cleanup grant, which is what we spoke about earlier, which is to mitigate the property or to make sure that it's eligible to move forward. So that'll get you through into your reuse, and then you'll be able to leverage your resources. You'll be able to market it as a new site, as a site that is eligible for any business to come in. And you'll be able to make sure that it has the resources that it needs to attract those new businesses, and it's not going to be a blighted area anymore. And it'll be ready for redevelopment, if that's what you choose to do. So these are some pictures of some brownfield locations. Some are gas stations, some are just, you know, an old tannery building. The bottom picture there looks like it's got a couple of smokestacks with it. So there's all kinds of different environmental issues that could be in any of these pictures. Just to give you an idea of what a brownfield could look like, you know, the one picture is just a building. You wouldn't know it by looking at the outside of it.
So would that be asbestos, or what? Yeah.
A lot of times asbestos is, and that is considered a hazard. I mean, that is considered something that you have to mitigate against. And this picture here, this is in Addison, that was, it was the Train Depot in Addison, that has been mitigated and is now the office for the Webster County EDA, the Economic Development. So it is functional, it is being used, and that's the before and after. And it's a very nice building now. But to look at the before compared to the after, you would never think that it would be able to be turned into that. So yeah, so we talked about, the only way we're going to know what areas need to be looked at is if you tell us. I mean, we know some off the top of our head, but really, where the bulk of that information's going to come from is you, you know your area absolutely best. So that's why we're here, we're trying to figure out what areas to look at, what are of the most concern to you, and go from there. We put together a survey, so you can submit your, you know, you may think of them tomorrow, this afternoon, two weeks from now. So we put together a survey, so you can fill out to submit to us, and we can help put those on that list. That QR code, you can take it, you can take your phone and put your phone up to it, and it'll take you right to it, under the camera mode. Or we can send you the link as well. And so you'll have those options, you can send us those surveys at any time. Questions?
So basically, what you've been awarded is a grant to assess, do the assessment part.
Correct.
So there's nothing to, for the second phase, there's no guarantee that after you assess, there's any money to help the landowner, be it private individual, to remedy your discovery through the assessment?
Correct. We would have to request it, just like any other grant that we would have to...
Okay. So as far as Nicholas County, who's assessing, or where are you getting your leads from on brownfields? I know that I got, you know, I've got Joey Groves assigned to it from the city, and he's sitting on your all's deal, but, and so what about Nicholas County? Who's assessing for the county? I mean, turning stuff in to you all for the county?
Right. So that's why we're here. We haven't gotten a ton of response. We've gotten a little bit, but not a ton. And it's just, you know, we've sent this out to each town, and then each individual, anybody that we think may have some ideas.
We will have, I mean, with information also. We will assign whoever really wants to target this stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's kind of all. We're trying to figure out where to...
Heather, would you all, we don't know, clean it up, or clean it up? Any...
No, it's strictly identification of the, it's an environmental assessment of what's there. Then you have, that gives you the opportunity to apply to the brownfields. It's a federal grant, so you're competing nationally. It's not, they don't give the money to the state as a pot of money. You're actually, but there's a number of, you know, Honeycomb has gotten a bunch of grants down there after they did their assessments and such. A lot of the, to be honest, these programs here are normally for urban areas like Honeycomb and Morgan County and Charleston. But how we ended up getting this grant is by leveraging the 2016 flood. It polluted the country, you know, so we used the river basins as the gist for the application justification, and therefore, we got it.
So...
We applied before, and we didn't get anywhere, but the 2016 flood helped us.
So we have a couple of properties in our city, but would one assume, then, by what you just said, that there might be a lot of properties in Richwood that would qualify?
They're, they've already turned in a couple.
Okay.
They've already turned in a couple, and Cowan's got a couple over there, and Bill Train Depot there, that's a, and that's a contaminated site over there, and there's two or three over there in Cowan area, that's over in Webster. And then I think, uh, Burch River, there may be a couple, yeah.
Okay, council, questions?
Got a question. Does, the Westford DEP, do they not have an inventory of a bunch of these sites?
They do not.
Really?
Right.
They don't know?
They do not. Not for brownfields.
That's a problem.
They've got inventory for quite a few different things, but not for brownfields specifically.
And a lot of that has to do with, you know, this program can get into private property. Normally, they're dealing with public land type things, and this is where you recruit people to actually work with you that have private property, instead of just being stuck with working on the road layer, or public, or a city, or some sort of public property.
Any other questions?
And then, again, that, you follow that, when you get on that app, it's real simple on your phone. You'll see, it's just drop down menus, and you just click on it, and it will be mapped automatically for wherever you are. You just put the address in, and it comes straight to us. You don't have to write it down or anything else, you just put it on your phone.
Go ahead, Carrie, you have a question.
Typically, what is an assessment cost? What does it typically cost? I know it probably changes depending on the size and things of that nature, but what's typically the cost of something, just in the assessment?
Typically, I would venture to say somewhere between $10,000 and $30,000.
So that's, that'd be motivating for somebody to do that.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. While I'm here, I just want to say, kudos, you guys got a lot going on. You got a lot of grants and things going. Your mayor's done really well, your grant writer's doing really well, and that's good stuff.
Thanks for your help. Appreciate your help.
Thank you, John. And as always, we're, we are a proud partner of Region Four and your whole crew.
Yep. They're a good crew.
So thank you very much. Thank you all.
Looking forward to the Potato Festival.
There you go. Just about a month out. Okay, thank you all.
I'm going to wait and hear what's...
Okay, yep. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, council, I personally think it's really important. Knowledge is power, education is important, and it concerns me that this fall, we have four constitutional amendments that are going to be on the ballot. And I want to do, as a mayor, as a leader of a city, as much as I can do to bring information to the people. So what I've done is I've reached out to the very people that play a role in these amendments on the November ballot. And so I asked Delegate Heather Tully if she would come and join us this evening, and from an educational standpoint, walk us through the amendments that will be on the November ballot. So Heather, again, welcome tonight, and the floor is yours.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, for having me this evening, and thank you for, everyone for listening and being interested, actually, in our constitutional amendments. As the mayor has mentioned, there will be four amendments on our ballots coming up in November for the general election. And the first thing I want to talk about is how does something get on the ballot as a, what we call a ballot measure or a constitutional amendment? And how that happens, it happens in the legislature. There has to be a, usually it's standby method of a resolution that has to pass both the House and the Senate with a two-thirds majority. So we were able to pass three resolutions that fit that bill in 2021, and one that fit that bill in our 2022 session. So those are the four constitutional amendments you'll see before us. The first one I want to talk about is the clarification of the judiciary's role in the impeachment proceedings. And the reason why you need these, an amendment to change, or a ratification of amendment to change, because it changes the text of your state constitution. So this one came about, amendment number one came about, actually because, if anybody remembers Alan Loffrey and the Couch Gate scandal, and the things that went on with the Supreme Court and the impeachment processes. The Constitution actually sets out this process very well, but unfortunately, some of our Supreme Court leaders at that point in time felt the need to kind of try to intercede in their own impeachment processes. And so this really, this ballot amendment is really about that, and setting forth and making sure that the language is very clear on who is in charge of impeachments when they do happen at the Supreme Court level. So that's ballot amendment number one. I'm going to skip number two and come back to you, because I think it's, there's the most questions about it, and it's probably going to be the more mostly key to explain. Amendment number three is the incorporation of churches or religious denominations. This is something that some churches and the council of churches had some interest in. Right now, as it stands, anybody, I think a lot of the religious leaders are very concerned because they cannot, they can be individually sued or liable for things that happen in their churches. So this allows, this you have a corporate type of structure to incorporate, so that it kind of takes away some of the individual liabilities of either the minister or those governing bodies of the churches via the session, or, you know...
Trust.
Trustees, that sort of thing. So that is one of the things that, and that's a pretty self-explanatory amendment. Number four comes forth, it's the Educational Accountability Amendment. And I don't know how many people realize this, but the State Board of Education and the State Department of Education, that is one of the only state agencies that does not go through what we call the Legislative Rulemaking Review Process. So when the legislature passes the bill, the bill tells you really what the law is. Legislative Rulemaking Review tells how the law is implemented, what the, what measures will be put forth, what processes will be put forth that implement that law. We have no control over that in the legislature. So we can pass a law, but sometimes the spirit and intent of the law gets subverted in that legislative rulemaking, by bypassing Legislative Rulemaking Review. Sometimes the State Department and State Board of Education doesn't always get things right. I think we saw that somewhat in Nicholas County with a lot of our school issues that went on. And so this really just puts it, puts those rules from the State Department of Education under Legislative Rulemaking Review, like every other state agency. So that was kind of where that one came forth. And then number two...
Hey, Heather, before we go on, anybody got any questions on the three that she's talked about? Okay.
And these will just put them on your ballots, and I'm not telling how anybody, how they should vote for them. Use your conscience, do your research, talk to other people in the community, but it is going to be there for the voters to decide. For the second, amendment number two, this is the Property Tax Modernization Amendment, and this is the most confusing amendment, I think, that I've heard from the individuals that I've heard from. They're very confused about this. And what this does is eventually allow, hopefully allow, the legislature to eliminate some of the business and inventory tax, but it does not guarantee that that will do so. It just merely gives the ability to be able to do so. I think we've heard a lot about, you know, tax reductions and those sorts of things, and, you know, we were in special session, and didn't seem to be able to agree with this, the House wasn't able to agree with the Senate on how to do some of the tax reform. This just allows the ability to eventually eliminate the business and inventory tax. And what they threw in as a sweetener is maybe, to probably get this to pass, was the ability to take away some of the motor vehicle and outlaw taxes. So, and that is no guarantee that that is going to happen if this passes. So this just really allows the ability, which I don't think is necessarily a bad thing, but it does not offer a guarantee that that will happen in the tax reform scheme. Is there any questions about that? Because a lot of people seem to think that this passes, oh, yeah, I'm going to get my, you know, my vehicle taxes are going to go away, this and that. Maybe, maybe not. So is there any questions about that? Because that one seems to be the most confusing. The Senate is really kind of pushing this plan. Your State Chamber of Commerce is pushing this amendment, as well as the manufacturers. So, you know, talk to some of those people at those agencies, the Manufacturing Association, State Chamber of Commerce, and then also talk, make sure that you talk to your county commissioners about how they feel. There's some questions about how you back, I won't use this word, backfill, but how do you make up for the budgets if some of those taxes are cut? So I know that there's a lot of concern circulating out there, and so, and those are probably very valid concerns. So that is where there's been a lot of questions, and where the House had a lot of questions about the tax amendments that the Senate wanted to pass this last time around, with special session.
Yeah. So Heather, per the literature that's been put out, it's apparent that if both of these were to happen, and of course, this doesn't make them happen, this only allows our legislatures to go in and potentially then go through the process. It'll make you all be allowed to do it, or this, if this passes, it will allow you all to amend those or do away with them. Of course, it's got to go through the legislative process here in the state. But it's been said that if we do away with the business and inventory tax and the vehicle, that's about a $500 million price tag.
And I'm not sure where you got this, but it is a heavy lift.
Okay, okay.
There is a heavy lift. There's some calculations the Senate has come up with, there's a book of calculations that, you know, it's...
Yeah, it's all over the place. So let's just say, and again, if it's 400 million, 500 million. So, and this is what I think's important. If we were to do away with that revenue, it would be a direct hit to this county. And so the happy medium is that we are competitive to business as a state, which, which, which is, which is a negative thing for us in the business and inventory tax, because people don't want to leave inventory in this state because they pay taxes for it.
That is correct. You're just sitting there, say you have a pipeline job, and you're just not working, sitting there...
Yeah, just like with the shutdown of the pipeline, a lot of that equipment had to be moved to our neighboring states.
They pulled it out of this area and moved it to somewhere else that they weren't paying taxes.
Because other states, they don't have this.
Right.
But the concern would be, they say they're going to backfill this revenue...
And our finance chair at House fringes every time...
I know, but I'm going to say what it is. It's backfilled. You're taken from the counties.
But we're curious how to make up the difference, maybe it's the better...
Well, but the thing of it is, is the county doesn't have the ability to go out and create tax.
Correct.
So you take money away from them, it comes out of their budget. So how do they make up that revenue? Well, so the state is talking about with their, with their...
Surplus.
Surplus, which right now, they're sitting on a billion, that they will, that they will make up that lost revenue.
Into the next 10 years, I think, is what the, what the Senate is, according to their calculations that the Senate has come up with, the House, you know, hasn't done those, hasn't made the same calculations. The Senate has a plan. According to them, that they will have, be able to guarantee that budget for the next 10 years, I believe.
Okay.
So it'll make the counties whole for the next 10 years, not what happens after that 10 years, anybody's guess. I don't necessarily think this amendment is a bad thing on allowing the possibilities. I do have some concerns from my own perspective about, you know, the numbers and how figuring out a plan, how to make them work. And that's, I think, what I've heard from a lot of people that have gave to me, like in the community. So I do urge you to talk, like I said, talk to everybody involved, talk to your county commissioners, talk, talk to the State Chamber of Commerce, because they are very pro this amendment, as are the, as is the Manufacturing Association.
Which makes sense, because you do away with that business and inventory tax, it's attractive to bring business in.
It is attractive to bring business in. That is one of the things, and some of the surrounding states, you know, it puts us in a little bit more competitive environment, because some of the surrounding states do not have that business and inventory tax. So that is one of the, you know, it's a pro and a con, and really, you're just going to have, the voters are just going to really have to decide what best suits their needs and what, to follow their hearts, and what their educations tell them.
How do you guarantee a surplus for 10 years?
Well, and that's, that's a question. How do you guarantee that? And that is some of the numbers that the Senate, so the Senate has come up with, the Senate Finance Chairman Eric Tar would probably be the best person to ask that question to, because that was one of his plans. He was here in the county to speak at a Nicholas County GMP meeting several weeks, probably about a month or so ago. And I can show you the book of Rise and Run Things, I can get it to you, the calculations for Nicholas County, and how they have calculated on the Senate's side. But it's very difficult to guarantee what will happen in 10 years without a crystal ball.
Or next year.
Or next year. Or six months from now. So that is one of the questions, and that is, it's a very valid question.
So typically, this would be a very... So, so typically this would be a very popular amendment because anytime you talk about reducing taxes, that's popular and attractive. But, you know, the only concern I have is, is understanding the maintaining of government and that the county doesn't have the means by themselves to go out and create new tax. And just knowing that, you know, from the standpoint of operating our county and all the tasks that they have with their county budget, you know, that it would be quite difficult if you take that revenue and there isn't some other replaced guaranteed permanent revenue.
And like I said, I think the, the idea of the amendment, it's well, it's well placed. You know, the spirit of the amendment is well placed. It's just probably going to be the implementation of how it's done. I think it would be very valid to have every county commissioner that you have come here and speak on this topic and kind of give the viewers of SC TV probably some more information on their standpoint and their take on how they feel about these amendments.
Good point. Okay, any questions?
How would a constituent get in touch with you?
You can call me at 304-872-6890, that's my home number.
6890.
Or my email at, in the state, it's Heather, H-E-A-T-H-E-R, dot Tully, T-U-L-L-Y, at westvirginiahouse.gov. And if you know somebody that lives really close, you can just drive up the driveway too.
I can stitch on, it happens to be me.
Come up the driveway anytime.
Yeah, I know where you live.
Okay, well, thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Delegate Tully, we appreciate it. Okay, the next item on the agenda, reporters report?
No reports received.
No report? Okay, council, I have a few things that I want to give you here. First, I would like to let you know that the flushing, the next flushing of the city of Somersville Water System will be the weeks of August 22nd and 29th and September 12th. So those three weeks will be flushing water system of the city of Somersville. So I encourage people to be careful washing whites when we're in your area. We just always caution, there's nothing wrong with the water, but sometime you could end up with colored water and it's just a matter of letting it get through the system. Flushing it out, making sure everybody's got good, clean water regardless of where you live. The next item I'd like to do is let you know that the City of Somersville Building Commission will be holding a meeting on 8/16/22, which I believe is next Tuesday, yep, next Tuesday at 12:00 noon, right here in city council chambers. There's been a lot of questions about the selling of Jones Hole. And of course, not very many about the selling of the property in Terror Estates, but a lot of questions about the Jones Hole. The Building Commission will hold a meeting that day and hopefully make decisions on how they're going to move forward with the sale of that property. So for anybody out there listening that's interested, you're welcome to attend that meeting. And certainly, council, you all are welcome as well. Council, at the last council meeting, you approved me to move forward on an unsolicited proposal to the Public Service Commission. And so I'm here to tell you tonight that effective sometime today, we filed, the City of Somersville filed an unsolicited proposal to merge Golly River Public Service District into the city waters distribution system. It's about a, what is it, about a five-page document. If anybody's interested in what the document entails, I encourage you to contact City Hall and we can send this to you in electronic file. Or sometime tomorrow, you'll be able to go to the Public Service Commission website and access this document because as soon as they trans, as soon as they electronically transmit it to all parties that are listed on this last page, it's, it's available to anybody, citizen or whatever that would like to view the document. So we are moving forward and the document is pretty self-explanatory, what we'd like to do and what we're asking for. So it was filed today. Let me see, let's see, flushing. Okay. The other thing I'd like to do, council, is just highlight a couple of, highlight one piece of correspondence and then I'd like to just make a public statement. Let me see if I can find a piece of correspondence. Yeah, here it is. So I received from the, let me tell you what, I want to state her title, branch manager, vice president, Anita Groves at United Bank. She sent a, a, an email to me regarding Officer Mullins. And basically what she was doing was just giving a shout out and a big time salute, appreciation to Somersville Police Department. Officer Mullins in, in conducting his nightly security, noticed that some deposit bags didn't make it for some reason into the deposit disposal. And so he retrieved them and anyway, we were, we were fortunate enough to catch that and get it turned back into the bank, called the bank out that night. And I don't know what was going wrong. The deposits weren't going in the deposit hole, but on the ground. But anyway, we found a couple of them. And this is just Anita from the bank, Anita Groves, reaching out saying, hey, we so appreciate the work of Officer Mullins and furthermore, the Somersville Police Department. So I just wanted to pass that along. The other thing I'd like to do is I would like to commend the actions of response time of Officer Jeremy Farmer and James Lane the night of July 28th in the incident that we had here in the city of Somersville. I commend those two officers for their action, their response time. And without a doubt, everything they did that night was, you know, spot on to the professionalism and expectation and training of certified police officers. So, you know, I commend both Officer Jeremy Farmer and James Lane. And what I can say is job well done. And, and we're so thankful to have our police officers respond in the fashion that Farmer and Lane did. So I commend them for a job well done. And of course, that's come at me many directions on professionals that have reviewed their actions that night and how they handled it. So I don't want to go into a lot of details because those are the things that, you know, I just don't think we need to. But I also think that in, that it's worthwhile to commend them for a job well done on what they did that night in bringing security and safety to our community. So that concludes the mayor's report. And council, I have good news, there is no executive session. So with that said, I'll jump to council reports. Counsel, any council reports or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, adjourn.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, council, have a good evening. Thank you all.